Okay, we'll call this May the 29th, 2019 meeting the Franklin County Commission to Order. Roll call?
Mr. Stottermeyer?
President.
Commissioner Waymire?
President.
Chair Howard?
Present.
Vice Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present. Okay, if you'd all stand, join us in a pledge of allegiance, and please remain standing for the invocation that will be led by Elder Ken Morton of the Church of Christ of Ottawa.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Please pray with me. Almighty God, our Father in Heaven, we come to you in this time and just thank you for the many blessings of life you've given us. We thank you for sparing this county largely for the storms last night, and certainly we pray for the welfare and the recovery of those who were affected. The continued rains are, maybe they're necessary, but they're certainly a hardship, and we pray for the welfare of those who are experiencing flooding and loss, and we just thank you that it's been limited here in this county, other than affecting many of the farmers, and we pray for their recovery, pray for their being able to recoup some of the losses perhaps, and we just pray that you watch over them and their families. We thank you for the blessings that you do bestow upon our county. We thank you for this opportunity to have our concerns aired before this commission, and we pray that as the concerns are addressed by these commissioners, they'll be done in a fair way, a respectful way, and that we just appreciate their efforts in behalf of our county, and we thank you for them, Father. Appreciate your blessings of life, however they may come to us, and we pray that you bless us with an eternal home with you in the end. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Okay, we're gonna go to public comment now. A citizen desiring to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so at this time. Discussion is limited to five minutes, and the commission will not take action or discuss items at this time. Discussion should be limited to matters of county commission business, and public comment is not permitted in regard to personnel matters or impending legal matters. Items introduced under public comment may become agenda items at a later date. Chair?
Joe Ferguson, 3335 Rock Creek Road. I'm gonna read two things, one from a letter that I received this week, and then a prepared statement. "Sir, I am Freoni Hollinger, a stroke victim of nearly ninety-nine, a constant griper and frequent county commissioner attendee until the stroke stopped everything, have to depend on others and doctors and others like you to carry on, county roads especially, and clipped your last readers forum. Well stated, all of it. Today, Wednesday, May 22nd. The road grader man did usual, a mess only a mile. Fourteen residents have since left, since Seventh Street Bridge was tore down and I left. Oh, the stories I could tell you if I could type, talk, or see. Meritizing is out flooding east and west, and it rained again Tuesday. Poor county roads, poor Mr. Lee, poor Jay Welton, poor county administrator, who I am a relative of mine. I don't know if you are right or not, but keep writing the Ottawa Herald, just sent in a subscription check. Recently, this commission was addressed by the Roads Department and asked to buy a new mower. There was not much discussion before one commissioner made the motion, another seconded, and so it was passed, and the taxpayers bought a new mower for the county roads crew. During that meeting, it was stated that the mower was totally wore out and that there were almost no metal left to weld to. Do any of you commissioners actually go out, and this also for the county administrator, go out and actually look at this stuff before you guys come and vote on it? And I'm asking this because President Ronald Reagan stated many times during his presidency, trust but verify. During the recent floods on Nevada Road, south of Rock Creek, down the Middle Creek Low Water Bridge, a thirty to forty bur oak tree came crashing down across Nevada Road. The next morning, to the surprise of all my neighbors, the road grader man came out to remove the tree. Now picture in your mind what a road grader looks like. Does it look like a bowdozer? He rammed, and he rammed, and he rammed the tree with a bowdozer, I mean, not a bowdozer, correction, the grader. Now is that what that piece of equipment's supposed to be used for? He pushed it, he finally got it off the road, so he got that part accomplished, but he pushed it back into the creek area. Now where's it gonna go the next flood? It's either gonna go past there and get stuck on the low water bridge, and we're gonna be dealing with that again and wasting taxpayers' dollars, or it's gonna go onto my family property that my family owns, and it's gonna go out in the field, and I or somebody else in the family's gonna have to deal with it. Now what, and this was all witnessed by my neighbors, the ramming part, is this acceptable practice for county employees to use equipment as ramming devices, or should have a supervisor been called in order to find a better solution for that particular task? Any individual that would do that in today's business would have to pay for any damages or be fired. Trust and verify, that's what I believe your job is. There's a new group now in Franklin County, it's called Franklin County Concerned Citizens. Two primary functions of this group. One is to discuss all the issues of displeasure of the way that you guys are spending our tax dollars and not providing proper oversight. The secondary is to find candidates to run against each of you when your term comes up for reelection, and to show them how to recall a commissioner that is not doing his job. It's open to all people, Democrats, independents, and Republicans. We want to take this county back and make it a better government than what it is today. We are concerned when our local leaders won't even go out after major storms and travel the roads, where some of us, we can know every corner of every road in our district. Show some compassion for the people that you serve. Not just show up for these meetings, these meetings are important, folks, but you've gotta actually get out and see the concerns and hear the concerns from your people, and not get upset when they voice their opinion.
One minute, Joe.
I know. My question is, every time you vote on a high-dollar issue, are you getting all the facts, or do we have personnel in the county, maybe such as a new county head or a county administrator that had no experience as a county administrator before? Are you getting all the facts that you need in order to make the most intelligent decision for this county? I ask that you start doing your jobs, and trust and verify. Thank you.
James Wallace?
Same thing, five minutes.
Jim Wallace, 2447 Nebraska Road. For the past few weeks, Mr. Lee has been telling us that road and bridge employees have been working around the clock trying to stay ahead of deteriorating roads and floodwaters. Mr. Lee has said that they are also watching the water rise in dangerous areas and assisting with traffic control and setting out barricades to prevent accidents. Mr. Lee also said that the county has also lost some of these barricades due to possible theft. I ask you the following questions. How many barricades are missing? What type of barricades are we talking about? The little plastic sawhorse type, or the huge custom-made ones out at two-by-twelve? What is the value of these barricades? Have you filed theft reports with the Sheriff's Department regarding the missing barricades? If not, why not? Have you recovered any of these barricades? How many employees are working nights? Are they volunteers, or is it mandated? Are they working overtime or working different shifts? If they are working at night, watching the water, are they not also watching the barricades? Does dispatch radio them once per hour to check on them and make sure they are okay? What are the grader operators and dump truck drivers doing when the weather conditions are counterproductive to roadwork? As long as the taxpayer's money is being used to purchase this equipment and pay county employee wages, I think taxpayers have a right to ask these questions and expect sensible answers. Is there a list or a map of where these dangerous locations are? Is the map or list available to the public? If not, why not? Should the taxpayers be, should not the taxpayers be made aware of how much overtime is being paid out because of this storm? I would like to ask the county to print a map of dangerous roads where the barricades are and put it on their website. I've seen many pictures, drone shots, and videos posted on Facebook concerning floodwaters and horrible road conditions. I have not seen any pictures that showed a roadblock or barricade from Franklin County Public Works or any employees. I have not seen any media showing a Franklin County vehicle or employee at the water's edge inside any emergency management vehicle in a danger zone. It might be easier to find a picture of Bigfoot than to find one of a Franklin County employee on the job, especially after normal working hours. Who is going to be responsible for death or injuries if someone has a wreck because they drove into floodwaters without warning? That's all I got.
Gene Hurt, 219 West Fourth Street in Linden, Kansas. Now you just heard both these two that just came up here before me. They are residents in this county. And look at the expressions and the desires they're trying to tell you here today. Okay? Now, are you gonna listen or not? Well, I practiced and preached for seventeen years, and I'll bring it up again. I'm concerned for every person out there, and I have for years. I've helped people, I've done things, and it will continue as long as my life and my health stays active. Now I tell you, when I seen Facebook, when Neil Wright, Neil Knight first brought that on Facebook, what happened out there? It was sickening, and then, and then the aftereffects of what he showed on the pictures of the rocks and the ram and ram and ram of the equipment jamming that stuff off the side of the road with the maintainer. My God. You don't have enough equipment, and yet you spend all these millions out here for Proximity Park, you know? And by the way, when we're talking about that, they're drag racing out there now, they're riding up and down, racing on the sidewalk, there's black marks out there on there now. So you know, people are using it for what they want to do. Who takes care of control of that? The city police or the sheriff? But, last night, from where I was, it was a scary night for me, and it was for all of us over in Osage. Well, the news media's got it all wrong, and what they said on the radio this morning's not true. There is damage in Osage, that's where it came through. There was a flood. How many inches you think I had? Four and a half inches, in a matter of seconds, is what it dumped. Okay? I seen floodwaters this morning up on the highway north of me, and the roads up over there. Terrible. Of course, when I come over here, it's not, because you were lucky not to get it. But I also feel for the people up in Lawrence. I mean, that is terrible. And then the article that came out and described by Jeff on the radio today, it was on the radio about this Terry Seymour. Driving on the highway, he realized that he was, he was in line with a tornado, he stopped his vehicle, got out of the vehicle, the wind blew him into the ditch. When the tornado came by, it picked up his car and slammed it down on top of him. Okay? It didn't kill him, it fractured his leg, and he is now in Lawrence Hospital, and his wife had said on the radio, or according to them, that his wife said that he's doing fine. So, look at the hardships everybody else is having out there, and I'm glad that Donald Trump now has, claimed this Kansas a disaster, and relief will be here for us all here. Now, my, my due respect is that we saw that you moved it and got those people to drive through that road. That was good, very good. But now you're gonna have to decide, are you gonna spend some more money for more signs and road barriers, just like was brought before you? And, you know, there was one other comment made that I, we got meetings this week, we're gonna have a meeting at Linden on the Promona and Melbourne dams and lakes, all should come to that, that it's gonna be at the high school, I'll be there for sure, and I have a feeling, but they're on Facebook, they're saying it's gonna be live feeds, and then the one at Melbourne, where they're gonna give free hamburgers and hot dogs out to people at the power station, that's real nice, I think that's real good. But, you know, I think we need to move to a concern by our partners that live beside us and everywhere for what they are hurting. Now, I feel that we all have to come together as one and take care of our people here in this county of Franklin, and because I feel the hurt, I feel the hurt, I really do.
It's time, Gene.
You say I've got time?
No, the time's up.
Okay. Thank you all.
I would like to speak, Chair Howard, and I would like to pick up right where Gene left off about coming together as one, which is incredibly rich coming from Gene Hurt, of all people. You guys want to come together as one, yet you come here and you consistently throw insults at our commissioners, you talk about seeing Bigfoot, you talk about all the things that the county is doing wrong, and you don't know. You don't bother to ask a single question for anyone who's listening today. If you think Joe Ferguson, Gene Hurt, or James Wallace are looking out for your best interests, no, they have not contacted me and asked me a single question about what we're doing at Franklin County. They don't have the first idea about what we're doing at Franklin County. You want to talk about use of county tax dollars? Do not interrupt me. Do not interrupt me. You had your time.
We listened to you.
You had your five minutes.
Let's talk about use of county tax dollars. We get our equipment at state bid pricing, we cannot get it cheaper. That is the cheapest that we can get it. That is what governmental agencies get their equipment at. The commissioners all know this. This info isn't withheld from them, we can't do anymore. Tax dollars, you guys talk about hot water heaters that we've spent twenty thousand dollars on, but what you don't know is, the hot water heater that existed in the jail could not be removed through the door, like, it was too big, and this is a heavy gauge steel water heater. And so, we had to pay somebody to cut that up into pieces, and if you've ever tried to cut, if you've ever tried to cut heavy gauge steel, it takes time, it takes labor, and so we can complain, we can complain about the costs that the county's spending on these things, but if we don't take the time to learn the facts, then all we do is appear ignorant. We had to pay someone, three-fourths that cost was labor to cut it up. Let's talk about the county budget now, and since I'm an inexperienced county administrator, let's look at what has happened with the budget since I have taken over. We have saved hundreds of thousands of dollars, not tens, not twenties, hundreds of thousands of dollars in personnel costs by finding efficiencies. What have we done with those hundreds of thousands of dollars? We've put them back into our employees so that we can reduce employee turnover, and we've put them back into our facilities. How do you think we have been able to afford replacing the HVAC at our adult detention center? That's been needed to be done for a decade. We can do it now because of smart budgeting. How are we working on the annex parking lot? How are we working on the sewage pumps out at Public Works? How are we gonna replace the district court HVAC? We are doing that through smart budgeting. So the very thing that you guys are questioning is something that we have demonstrably been very good at. You come to our budget hearings, you can literally see the numbers where those savings have been realized. Anyone who wants, anyone who wants to see those numbers, they are literally right in front of you. If you want to know what we are doing, I will stand behind every single decision that I have made as a county administrator, and every decision that I have made, it gets run through the Board of Commissioners. I've said this before, I'll say it again, I have a ten thousand dollar spending allowance. If it gets about five thousand dollars, it comes to the Board of Commissioners, and they have information on what they want to do with that. So anything above about five thousand dollars, it's going to the public's elected officials so that they can make a decision. Since I have been here, we have strived to be responsible with taxpayer dollars, and we have been incredibly open, which we will continue to do, but it takes citizens who actually want to know what we're doing instead of advancing their own agendas, which is what this is. These aren't concerned citizens, these are people who are trying to build their own political platform. So please, if someone wants to know what we are doing in Franklin County, contact me, I can be reached at 785-229-3485.
No more public comment, right? Okay, we'll go to back to correspondence and organizational business. Get this computer to go.
Congrats, Gaila, what a nice day for you to come up.
Okay.
Let's come together as one, Gaila.
We're gonna recognize Departing Human Resource Director Gaila Wilkins for her years of service to Franklin County.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Lookin' all smile, yeah.
For several years, Gaila and I've had discussions, and it should be known that Gaila and I don't always agree on everything. We tend to come at things from opposite sides, but we do get to the, to agreement eventually. And one of the things that we both passionately agree upon is recognizing our employees with more than just their name and a clock. And there is a story behind that, and I will tell it to you some other day. Gaila was hired as the Executive Administrative Assistant on June 1st, 2005, and then in January of 2006 was named the interim HR Director, and in November of 2006 was promoted to the HR Director, where she continues to serve today. That's just a brief synopsis of all the work that she has done. I would personally like to thank her, on the record, for taking a chance on me. We may not always agree, and it's been an adventure, and I thank you, and I wish you the best. Thank you.
I would also like to say a few words about Gaila. Gaila is someone that I've been very close to since I've started here. Gaila has been, you know, we have about two hundred and thirty employees, and, you know, I would take two hundred and thirty Gailas if possible. She's been an incredibly hard worker, a woman of incredibly high integrity, and she is very strong, and I think that is what I will always remember Gaila for. Gaila is strong in her stances, she's not afraid to disagree, and I can't tell you the number of times in my five years that the organization has benefited and has become better because of Gaila's strong stance and her personality. So you don't, you don't replace people like Gaila. You know, we're excited about Joanne, Joanne's gonna be wonderful, but we'll miss Gaila, and we'll miss her for a long time. So thank you, Gaila, I appreciate everything that you did.
Don Stottermeyer and I were on the board at the time we hired Gaila to be our HR person. It was a turbulent time, we were changing from, we were changing over to a professional management system back then, and it was difficult because we had to manage the change, but also we had to get the right people in the right places to do the, do the change. Gaila came in, took on the job, was excellent at HR work, she was doing so good that we asked her to do payroll, and she accepted doing that job and been doing it ever since. And I just, just want to thank her personally for all the work she's done to help our county over the years. I didn't think she'd ever retire, but it's a time to move on and enjoy other things in life. Thank you, Gaila.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'd like to say something, I was the Chairman of the Year, we hired Gaila, and let me tell you, it was very appreciative, being the Chairman, to have somebody stepping in to the HR to take a lot of the pressure off of what we do up here and keep us out of trouble as much as she could. So, but I'd like to thank her very much, I know, you know, that's a long time ago, but, yeah. Only other thing I can remember that year, planting the arboretum out in front of the courthouse on Arbor Day, it's in the court. That's two best things I can remember happened in 2000.
Thank you, darling.
Right, Tony.
Give a hug. I'm gonna hug her. Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
I'll get in the back.
Close enough? Very much. Thank you.
I want to also thank Gaila for her service. I got a little quick story. I had a surgery here a while back at Overland Park, and there was some mix-ups between bill and the insurance company, and they lost some stuff somewhere in between. Anyway, I don't know how many trips I went into Gaila's office over this, I think we talked to at least half the people that work at Overland Park, and probably three-fourths of the people that worked for Blue Cross before we got this sorted out, and she never ever hesitated. When I came in, we got on the phone, we started calling people, and they finally got it, it worked out, but it's obvious that Joanne and her do communicate, because I notice now when I go into the office, Joanne shuts her door, so I'm not sure. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding. Anyway, Gaila put a lot of time and effort into my situation alone, and I know she's done it for other employees too, and that's gonna be missed a lot, and Joanne does a great job too, I'm just kidding. So thank you, Gaila.
Gaila's been a lot of very good things for this county, and I'm gonna miss her very much. I think the most important thing she's been is stability, when stability was sorely needed. And, but that's not to take away from the many other things she's been, we'll miss her greatly.
And there won't be a reception on?
Thursday.
Tomorrow, from two to four?
Right here. Everybody's welcome. Okay, well, we'll take us to the consent agenda items today that need considered and approved on the consent agenda, or the commission meeting minutes from the 22nd, 2019. Payroll in amount of one million, one hundred and...
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes.
Okay, takes us to our items of business. Our first item of business is consider for approval Motorola radio and NICE logger maintenance agreements. Alan?
Good morning. The two agreements that we have go along with the Motorola contract that was approved a year ago before we did the construction of the radio system. At that time, we locked in the maintenance cost. The reason you see two agreements, it will be that way, and if we do any additional right now, the way Motorola's doing things, if we do any additional work to our system, any improvements or anything, they want to keep the original contract in place and those dollar figures set, because we set those for 10 years. So that's why we see two different agreements. So if we add something else to the system in the future, there could be additional agreements that we do also. The NICE logger was one of the, I think we did two change orders with the contract as we went through the construction phase. And what the NICE logger does is that's a piece of equipment that sets in our radio room and records all of the radio traffic that's going on on our radio system. Law enforcement uses that, and then also if we have any other issues where we need to pull information off of that to check and see how our system's operating, or see if we've got any issues, we can go back and look at that and pull the, those recordings. So if you've got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them for you at this time.
We can approve both these on one, one motion?
Yeah, and, and this is something we've talked about in public meetings several times. This is part of the maintenance for our radio system. It is what is going to keep it up to date, and the idea behind this is that we're not in a position here in a decade like we were when we switched radio systems, where we have a system that is so completely outdated and out of whack that a total replacement is in order. So by doing this, which has been budgeted, you know, we're going to keep our system as, as cutting-edge as it is, so.
And, and just to give you an idea of, of that maintenance too, it's not just the maintenance of the equipment. We're basically, everything is driven now by computers and the technology with that. Motorola has a set schedule with the state of Kansas. We are part of the state of Kansas radio system. We're what's considered an add-on to that system. They have scheduled software upgrades every two years. This is the year that upgrades will be taking place. Dispatch is already, I just got a notification this morning that they're doing some upgrades so that the consoles in our dispatch center operate properly on the system. Later this year, Motorola will be into the state, and every dispatch center and every radio system, every tower in the state will be touched, and the equipment will receive software upgrades. And that's a large part of what we're paying for here. Plus, we also, with our maintenance, if we have a piece of equipment that does go down and needs to be serviced, this covers that, so we can kind of budget what our maintenance is going to be. There could be at a point on the system, if we have a piece of equipment that cannot be repaired, we may have to purchase that piece of equipment. But we've also got some spare parts for the critical components of our system, switches, and we've got spare repeaters and stuff like that that would just take the maintenance technicians to come in and put that back in place, and then they send the piece off that needs to be repaired or replaced for us. So what we tried to design into our system is the fact that before, our old system, we had no backup. We've got redundancy built in here so that for our public, it's a public safety radio system, and in having that, the downtime needs to be minimal. So that's the way we've built the system, and we're trying to improve where I find in the last year, a couple places, that we still need some additional redundancy to make sure our system is operational 100% of the time. So that's what we're working on.
Any of the departments, the rural departments that purchase radios along with us, when we got these, does this maintenance agreement cover them too?
This maintenance agreement covers the infrastructure, all the equipment in dispatch, that is part of the radio system, which is our consoles. Then we have a room in, back behind dispatch that covers equipment in there, and then all five of our towers. We have equipment on those, and it covers that, minus our actual equipment that we have at the tower sites, like the air conditioners, generators, buildings, and then also our microwave system is on a separate maintenance agreement.
And Alan, would you clarify for the public that when we purchased this radio system, we really knew, we knew what we were going to have as far as this cost?
Yes.
We really knew.
Yes, we did.
I mean, that was just something that we are, yeah.
We actually worked on this radio system for two or three years before we even brought it to the county commission to purchase the system. There's been a lot of time put into it, and this is the way to go. I can tell you that there are other counties that are using Franklin County as an example, and I know of at least three across the state in the last year that Tom and I have been working with. They will call and say, hey, we're doing this system. What'd you guys do? So we're kind of the leading edge for the county side of this radio system.
Questions for Alan, anyone else? We have public comment on it.
Gene?
Five minutes, Gene, and only on this item.
I know, Rick.
I know.
Okay, now, this is what I'm talking about, about coming together as one. See, this is all we ever get when somebody like this comes up here and explains this, because it's not totally explained perfectly. There are people out there asking me this morning, what's he going to talk about, more radios? Well, I don't know, I said. Well, I have to listen, see it. Maintenance, okay. How much? You didn't say it up here. You know, I can't see it on internet, some of them. They can't tell anything about that. What is it? How much? Okay? And he needs to come back up here too and say, just how many radios do you have out there, and are they used like what happened last night? You see, like Ron Reagan said, and I always use the words, trust and verify. That's what I'm asking now. That's what it is. And I don't like what Ratcliffe drew on me by my speaking last week either. That's my opinion, and that's what it is. I've been here for that number of years, long before this county administrator, and he came. So I know. Thank you.
I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Documents in front of us, for the world to see. I'd be happy to make a motion if you're ready for it.
I just want to state that when we talked about what these radios are used for, we spent meeting after meeting discussing these radios, talked about them in numerous study sessions and other meetings, about the numbers, the amount, what they were being used for. That's all been talked about numerous times, so it's out there. With that, if there's no other question, I'd look for a motion to approve these two maintenance agreements.
Motion approved.
Have a motions or a second?
I would second it.
A second.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Before I vote, a couple months ago, I went up to Alan and Mr. Winter, and they took me a whole tour of the whole system. Probably some of you guys need to go, there's some of you you ain't seen that's up in an area that they keep locked up, and it's locked up for a reason. There's a lot of money, county has a lot of money wrapped up in it, and you just don't advertise it. It's there, and they protect it, and they need to protect it. When this subject come up, I did talk to Cutler Fire Department, I talked to Pawawami Fire Department, I talked to Franklin Fire Department, and I all asked their opinions, what they thought. Plus, I went to one fire board meeting, and it was discussed, and it was brought up, had a couple little glitches, but all of them seemed to be happy that it's moving along. I talked to a couple ambulance workers to get away from what you guys do, to see what they thought, and they were impressed with the system, the clarity and, and availability that, that it is working, and they were happy with it. So I'll vote yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, takes us to our second item, be considering the bid for the replacement of the lift station pumps at the County Barn. Brandon?
Morning. If you recall, I came to you last week about this, just gave you an update that we had our, our bids in for that, and the one that we got was quite a bit lower than what we were anticipating. We were anticipating it to be around the $13,000 mark. This one came in at $9,977. So this will replace both of the pumps, one of which is not working at all, and the other one is so old it's ready to quit at any time, and the control system that operates those pumps.
What was that 13,000 based on, Brandon?
That was based on the replacement of two pumps, as well as the controls that operate those.
But what, where did that number come from?
The, so the savings, I think, came from difference in pumps. The pumps that they had quoted at the time, when they put in that bid, they, the pumps were just that much more expensive.
Well, I guess my understanding was we put this out for bid.
Correct.
We had a contractor show up, but we only had one, and they bid it at 13 some odd thousand dollars, whatever your number was. And then thinking that, you know, we can probably do better than that, let's see if we can get other bids, we put it out for bid again, and the second time it came in at 9,000 some dollars. Is that?
So the 13,000 came in when we realized there was a problem with these pumps, and I got a contractor out to see where we were at. When we first started gathering bids, we only had one contractor come out, and they weren't interested in doing the work, they only wanted to supply the equipment. Of course, we were looking for somebody to install it, and so we put it out to bid again, and that's when we got back the, the 9,000 bid.
That's better than the anticipated 13,000.
And you already answered my question, because yeah, if you're going to replace it, just do both of them, and yeah, let's get it all done at one time, so that's awesome.
Okay, any questions, more questions for Brandon on this?
If we approve, do they say when they can start?
They don't know for sure yet. Once we let them know that we're ready to go, then they'll get those pumps ordered, and I'll find out more information from then on how quick they can get it put in.
It would look for a motion to approve the bid of Kerry Plumbing in the amount of $9,977 to replace the lift station pumps at the County Barn.
Motion approved.
Motion's for a second?
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Before I vote, a couple months ago, I went up to Alan and Mr. Winter, and they took me a whole tour of the whole system. Probably some of you guys need to go, there's some of you you ain't seen that's up in an area that they keep locked up, and it's locked up for a reason. There's a lot of money, county has a lot of money wrapped up in it, and you just don't advertise it. It's there, and they protect it, and they need to protect it. When this subject come up, I did talk to Cutler Fire Department, I talked to Pawawami Fire Department, I talked to Franklin Fire Department, and I all asked their opinions, what they thought. Plus, I went to one fire board meeting, and it was discussed, and it was brought up, had a couple little glitches, but all of them seemed to be happy that it's moving along. I talked to a couple ambulance workers to get away from what you guys do, to see what they thought, and they were impressed with the system, the clarity and, and availability that, that it is working, and they were happy with it. So I'll vote yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, takes us to our second item, be considering the bid for the replacement of the lift station pumps at the County Barn. Brandon?
Morning. If you recall, I came to you last week about this, just gave you an update that we had our, our bids in for that, and the one that we got was quite a bit lower than what we were anticipating. We were anticipating it to be around the $13,000 mark. This one came in at $9,977. So this will replace both of the pumps, one of which is not working at all, and the other one is so old it's ready to quit at any time, and the control system that operates those pumps.
What was that 13,000 based on, Brandon?
That was based on the replacement of two pumps, as well as the controls that operate those.
But what, where did that number come from?
The, so the savings, I think, came from difference in pumps. The pumps that they had quoted at the time, when they put in that bid, they, the pumps were just that much more expensive.
Well, I guess my understanding was we put this out for bid.
Correct.
We had a contractor show up, but we only had one, and they bid it at 13 some odd thousand dollars, whatever your number was. And then thinking that, you know, we can probably do better than that, let's see if we can get other bids, we put it out for bid again, and the second time it came in at 9,000 some dollars. Is that?
So the 13,000 came in when we realized there was a problem with these pumps, and I got a contractor out to see where we were at. When we first started gathering bids, we only had one contractor come out, and they weren't interested in doing the work, they only wanted to supply the equipment. Of course, we were looking for somebody to install it, and so we put it out to bid again, and that's when we got back the, the 9,000 bid.
That's better than the anticipated 13,000.
And you already answered my question, because yeah, if you're going to replace it, just do both of them, and yeah, let's get it all done at one time, so that's awesome.
Okay, any questions, more questions for Brandon on this?
If we approve, do they say when they can start?
They don't know for sure yet. Once we let them know that we're ready to go, then they'll get those pumps ordered, and I'll find out more information from then on how quick they can get it put in.
It would look for a motion to approve the bid of Kerry Plumbing in the amount of $9,977 to replace the lift station pumps at the County Barn.
Motion approved.
Motion's for a second?
Second.
Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Howard?
Yes, thank you, Brandon.
It takes us to staff reports.
Derek?
Yeah, Janet and I continue to work on our budget. We've got some key numbers from the appraiser that we've been waiting on, and so we'll continue to refine our numbers in anticipation of our meetings with you all. Just in light of comments that were made to kind of talk about how we budget, so we will sit down with each individual department, as you know, and go through their individual budgets. And over the last few years, what we've been able to find is that there were certain positions that could either be consolidated, or, you know, we even found a couple that we thought we could do without, and so those positions were removed from that budget. And at the time, when we did that, and we discussed this with you during our budget hearings, we had a couple of options. We truly could have cut that out of the budget, which theoretically could have resulted in a lower mill levy, but in looking at the immense capital improvements that were needed, the state of the adult detention center, the old courthouse, the parking lot, some of the stuff out of Public Works, you guys made the decision, let's increase our transfer to capital improvements so that we can start taking care of some of these projects. And so effectively, what we've done is find savings in individual budgets, which has allowed us to increase our transfer to our capital reserve funds, which is what these projects, like the, the lift pumps, the jail HVAC, what all of that is being paid out of. I think Gene asked very fair questions just now about the amount of the service contract, about how many radios there are out there. And if we have the document at all, we will provide it as quickly as possible. So file an open records request with me. I will get it to the appropriate department head that has the requested documents and get that back to you as soon as possible.
You have anything else for, on staff reports? Just go ahead if you.
Just one more, one more thing. Like Derek said, we did get all the numbers from the appraiser this week. And I'm processing those. And we'll still be waiting on the state to bring in our state assessed numbers. And we won't get those till June 15th. So we are working on the numbers. We're continuing to get the budget put together. And then we also have our special election coming up next week for the city of Wellsville. So the polling location will be open for the city of Wellsville at their normal location from 7:00 to 7:00 on Tuesday. So everything will be good to go for their sales tax election next Tuesday.
Brandon, you have anything else? Sheriff?
Morning. I have a couple of things here. This last week, we had two of our corrections officers that graduated from the jail training academy down in Hutch. And that is a curriculum that was put together in conjunction with the Kansas Jail Association, Sheriff's Association, and the National Institute of Jail Operations. And that course, it's a, it's a one, it's a one-week course. There's also some online courses and things like that. And each of the, each of the students has to take, I believe it's a total of four tests, three tests, and then a final exam as well that they have to, that they have to successfully complete to get their national certification. Both of our corrections officers did that and are now nationally certified corrections and jail professionals. So we're proud of them. This is a program that we put in place to help raise the professionalism of jails across the state of Kansas. And particularly, we, something we want to do for our staff. And as part of our strategic plan to have, to have at least, we wanted at least 50% of our staff to have that certification by 2022. But we, we're now learning that we may be able to far exceed that because we think that we're going to be able to have this academy more than twice a year now. And so if we're able to do that, and this was the first, the first academy for Kansas. And so if we're able to increase the frequency of those, then we're going to get our people through a lot sooner. So.
So this doesn't certi, how long is this?
This is one week and it is just the jail academy. It certifies them as a jail professional. This is not a law enforcement certification. So.
Held at the same place that Yoder did?
It is. It was a KLETC. So yes, sir. Also, we have the, our citizens academy started last week. And we have, currently have 11 students in that class, residents of Franklin County that are in that class. We had other, a lot of other interests. Some people couldn't do it from the timeframe because it's a six-week academy and they were going to have to miss several of the classes. Then we had some people that just weren't eligible for a variety of reasons. But we have that class going and we have a pretty good group of people. As I said, last week was the first week. It'll be every Wednesday. So we'll be meeting tonight as well. And it's, it's six weeks. I believe tonight is dispatch and I forget who else is there tonight. But we'll have a couple of different areas of law enforcement that'll be there tonight. Any questions on either one of those? Okay. As we know, did have tornadoes that went through surrounding counties yesterday. I just wanted to touch on the importance of that radio, of our radio system to us in law enforcement. As a result of all that, we were able to put our radios into use. We're able to track what was being, what was going on around us. Highway Patrol was able to, they had their own command post set up just south of Lawrence. They needed additional help. Troopers were coming from all over the state, couldn't, and they needed help right now. So myself, the under sheriff and our patrol commander, all of which are salary, so it didn't cost the county any more money. We went up to, up north on 59 and met at the Highway Patrol Command Post and helped, helped out there until they were able to get all the resources there. We were there for a couple hours. But the great thing about it was we could all communicate because we had the Highway Patrol frequencies in our radios. They have a special event channel that we have access to. And that's where we were putting all of our operations. So it didn't interfere with, with day-to-day operations. It still had to, had to go on. So it was good for us to use it in that environment because it wasn't a, I'm sad that they, that there's, they had so much damage up there, but we can benefit from that by going there, learning how the system worked, working together with those partners. We would run that system the same way if something did hit here in Franklin County. So again, there is a huge benefit that we have with this system, but we did not have the options with, with our old radio system.
I do have a question on that. So was there no, I didn't get a chance to ask before the meeting. We did not have citizens that were affected in Franklin County? Because last night on the TV, they were talking about bringing people to go door to door. And they said Franklin County and Douglas County. And I was like, oh, was there?
Well, the emergency management may know something more. But from what we had, it would have gone through the northwest corner of our county. But we didn't, I did not receive any reports of anything significant at all. The damage reports I had were some trees. So today, yesterday, the law enforcement torch run, the torch arrived down here yesterday from Douglas County and with a ceremony out at Calmar. And then this morning, part of the reason I was a little late getting here this morning is our, the torch was leaving Ottawa today and it's headed down to Beto Junction where we'll be handing it off early this afternoon, late morning, early afternoon, likely early afternoon, to Lyon County, who will be meeting us at Beto Junction to take that. So that will be going through our county today. And then the last thing I have is just, if you remember our situation here last year where we had to seize several, a bunch of horses and we went through that process. And I had made some suggestions to the, to the legislature, through the reviser's office, about some amendments to that statute. I just wanted to update you guys that those changes did take effect and the governor signed all that. And those will be, those changes that we suggested as a result of our case will be going into effect July 1st through those statutes. We may have another situation. I've talked with our, the county counselor about some, another situation won't be nearly as bad as that one that we may be experiencing here real soon as well. So I'll keep him updated. And if whatever he thinks that you guys need to know, I'm sure he'll pass that on. But we're not looking at anything near like what we had before. So I'll answer any questions that any of you have for me. Thank you.
Oh, you have anything else?
I want to just give you an update of the declaration that we signed last week. As you know, that runs for seven days. It's due to expire today. I see no need in us extending that declaration at this time. The flood issues or concerns that we had last week and through the weekend have diminished for Franklin County. We are continuing to monitor, as you know, it rained pretty much every day for the last week. We're continuing to monitor the river levels, working with the city and with the Public Works to gather information. We're also working closely. I receive an email daily from the manager of Pomona Lake and Melvern Lake. It's one manager that runs both of them. We may see some releases from those lakes. It would surprise me if they don't start releasing today from Melvern. They are doing that to maintain their levels. There is no issues with either one of those dams. We'll also be in attendance to the public meeting that they have scheduled. I believe it's tomorrow night over in Linden. So we are working with our partners on that. We have also received some good news from the Corps of Engineers. And thanks to the city of Ottawa, and I believe the county also had some expense in maintaining and certifying the levies for the city of Ottawa. That's what's saving the city of Ottawa right now. There are no concerns on any issues with the levies with the Corps of Engineers. So we're one of the few that have a levy system that is not having concerns right now in the state. To just kind of give you a update on the declaration. Yesterday, the president did approve federal assistance for Kansas. Franklin County was one of the counties that was listed. I believe there's only right now 14 or 15 counties listed. There will be, I'm sure, additional counties added to it as we go on. What that means for us is that there's, there is no guarantee, but there's the possibility that we could receive some federal assistance and funding for the roads and the infrastructure that is damaged that Public Works has been working on repairing. So with that, we've also, across the state, to give you kind of an idea, we're one of about 50 counties that are in a declaration in the state right now due to flooding or severe weather, tornadoes that have done damage. There's, I believe it's eight federal Corps of Engineer lakes that are at critical stage or going into critical stage, which includes Pomona, Melvern, John Redmond, Perry. Tuttle Creek is going into critical today. Milford is still a little bit off, but all of those deal with the main rivers that we have. The Missouri River is in major flood stage again in some of the counties up Leavenworth County and on up north. So the state of Kansas is being taxed right now with about 50 emergency operation centers in counties that are operating actively and are requesting assistance. The state started requesting assistance from out of state, I believe, two days ago. So we've got, through the Emergency Management Assistance Compact, we've got assistance coming in from out of state to help us also. As far as Franklin County though, I believe we're in good shape right now other than Public Works has a lot of work to do. And that could take some months to get some of that completed. And we are gathering information so that we'll be ready when we do a, what's called a kickoff meeting with the state and FEMA to start gathering that documentation. I know I've worked with David and we're gathering the information now, so we'll be ready for that. And I believe we'll meet our threshold for expenses without a problem.
I drove over Monday and looked at Melvern Lake and then went by Pomona Lake. There are a whole lot of water back.
Well, they're both, they're both at record highs. The record before was in 95. They've surpassed that by about a foot, foot and a half this year. And what they're doing on those releases is they're within a couple of feet of going out the emergency spillways. The Corps wants to continue to control the releases and the water that's coming downstream. So when it says they are opening up the gates, they are only opening up the gates to the amount of water that's coming into the lake because they want to maintain their current levels. They don't want to go any higher. They do not want them to go out the emergency spillways.
Scary where we'd be without those two lakes.
That's exactly right. And as far as the storm last night, we tracked it as it came up from Emporia through Osage County. It went just to the north of Franklin County into Douglas County. And the damage path started just south of, well, Lone Star Lake. It went, don't know if they had any major damage in through that area, but from 59 Highway, about a mile, mile and a half south of Lawrence city limits or south of 10 Highway East. It missed all of the major cities. Luckily, it missed the major part of Lawrence, hitting subdivisions outside of town. It missed Udora and hit residences up through there. Went into where they're saying it was in Linwood. It actually went just beside Linwood and just to the north. And when I say just beside it, the road separated going into the city limits of Linwood. Went on up north. And that's into Leavenworth County, which is where the Missouri River is in major flood stage. So they're working a flood in that county, plus also now tornado damage from last night. And Kansas City International Airport was shut down for about four hours. It did not hit the airport, but that debris from the tornado path, which when it went past Linwood was over a mile wide. And the debris was being kicked out over six miles beyond the path of the tornado. And that's why KCI was shut down is because of the debris on the runways. They had to clean all that off.
This morning, I saw on the news that there's several flights that have been canceled for the day. Some of them are on schedule, some have been canceled, some of them are running late. So they're still dealing with that. But I just want to say that I think the local channels did an amazing job last night. I watched bouncing back and forth between 9:00 and 5:00 at my place. And they stayed right on that all the way, tracked it and had people videotaping it. Basically, if you were watching those channels, could watch the whole thing all the way through. They stayed right with it.
We had some injuries as that storm went through and no fatalities that I've heard of yet. We did, Tom went up and assisted the emergency management office in Douglas County last night. And then also the sheriff's office was up there. We also had calls from the city of Ottawa to provide any assistance that was needed. So we are helping our neighbors. And with that, I'm very confident with us helping our neighbors the way we do, we will have no issues if we need help. So that's one thing I strive for my office is it's not just the fact that we have two employees in our office and that's the emergency management for our county. It's the fact that we continue to strive to work with all of our partners in county and the counties around us to make sure that we have a good, solid emergency management program in Franklin County. And I can tell you that there are counties across the state right now that are in disarray just in the fact that they have part-time or maybe one person that's the emergency manager. And it may be that that's just as a title for that office and they don't take emergency management serious like our county does. And with that, I want to thank the county commission for supporting our emergency management program so that we do have that good, solid program in the county for us. And that helps us mitigate some of the hazards that we have that can come into the county and affect our citizens because our number one priority is public safety to the citizens of Franklin County.
Douglas County, the counties request any equipment or help going forward?
Right now, Tom is going to be going back up with some of our equipment. That's Homeland Security equipment this morning and will be helping them the rest of the day. I will be going to Manhattan. With Tuttle Creek being an issue, they are preparing for the city of Manhattan to have some major flooding within the next week to month. They're going to reach their critical level even on the floodgates by Saturday. So we've got an incident management team sitting in Manhattan that's doing a lot of planning right now with the local responders and getting resources coming in there. So when we talk about coming together, the state of Kansas is coming together and we're helping our neighbors.
I think I did see on the news this morning, they have had one fatality. I believe they said a lady was killed, a tree came into her house or something.
Yeah, that was over in Missouri though, I believe.
Was it Missouri? I just heard it. I didn't know where, for sure they said.
Okay, any more questions for Allen on this?
Thank you.
How many years of service, Allen?
I started in 1985. So what's that, 34 and counting?
Everything from sheriff's office to road grader to emergency management.
Yeah, it's, this year will be 15 years in emergency management, I believe. Doesn't seem like that, seems like yesterday. Thank you.
Mitch, you have anything?
Commissioners, first of all, I'd like to just say my thoughts and prayers are all with all those that were impacted by the storm last night. You know, something within just a mile or two of our county makes it very real. These are our neighbors that were impacted. I too did reach out to Douglas County to offer our assistance. I'll be reaching out to Osage County as well. In some of the past storms, those folks reached out to us. So we really are. So we really are in this together and communicating and trying to help each other anytime we can. That being said, I'm very thankful that tornado missed us last night. To recap, this past weekend, another flooding event, what is this, the third one recently? We had folks, again, working through the weekend, we had just a handful, four or five, that worked at various times to make sure that the roads were passable, removing debris from the low-water crossings to make sure they were open. We did not do a complete job on those. Our focus right now is to make sure that there is a driving lane open. And as, as we get time, we will go back and correct those situations. We'll remove the large trees, brush from the side of the road, all of those things as time allows moving forward. We have literally lost probably thousands of tons of rock from our roads. They are in terrible, terrible shape. We've got tubes that are silted closed, we've got culverts that have washouts next to them. We have holes in the road, anything imaginable, we, we're experiencing it. We have mile after mile where we have lost the road edges. We are down past the base material, in some places down to bedrock. Those things, they're not going to be fixed overnight, it's going to take us a while to correct these situations. Regardless of how those, how those came to be, this is where we're at, and it's going to take time to correct the situation. We've already started, through these disaster declarations, we have already begun to track our time, our material, our equipment, all of those things, and to document these areas that we're going to be correcting. And, and the worst of the areas, we are working on as we speak. Yesterday, there was, I think it was on Butler Road, out in the southwest part of the county, there was a huge hole right in the middle of the road, they took care of that and got that back open. So we are working on the worst of the situations first, and then we will methodically through each district, take care of these items. Not only do we have the FEMA, and now the President declared these, this disaster area, I've also been in contact with KDOT, the Federal Highway Administration has a emergency relief funding opportunity for us, which will help us on our FAS routes. Think Colorado and Virginia are two of the ones that come to mind immediately. Both of those have experienced some extreme erosion issues. The road is okay for now, but we've got major, major issues with those roads. I met with a contractor yesterday to look for solutions to that, hoping to hear back from him today. We may even have to get consultants involved to, to really look at this in depth. But we believe that there are some funding mechanisms out there to help relieve that pressure from us, but we are, we are pressing forward. And just like Alan mentioned, with the release of water from Melvern and potentially Pomona, we are watching the Marideseen River Basin for any other potential flooding issues that might occur due to this release of water. So we're doing all of those things, our folks are working overtime, I've got them on voluntary overtime right now. If need be, we'll make that mandatory, but we are working extra, we are out there taking care of the signs, the barricades, road issues as quickly as we possibly can. I would ask the public, if they have questions or concerns, to please give me a call at seven eight five two two nine three five five zero. We would appreciate their input and their knowledge of what's going on in their, in their neighborhood. So that's the part with the, regarding the last flood event. I will give you a couple of project updates, dust control started yesterday in the midst of everything else. Our fear was if we didn't do this now, we would fall to the back of the line and it would be mid to late June before we got another opportunity. So, we are squeezing this in and doing the best we can regarding dust control. So that should be done here in the next couple of days, weather permitting, of course. The Highway Fifty-nine and Keeman Road intersection project, KDOT, I've got a couple more forms that they need, but this will be on your agenda for next week. Again, bids came in under the engineer's estimate, so that's, that's good. Also, was notified yesterday that the bridge on Pawnee Road that you all authorized here a couple of years ago, was in the KDOT letting last Wednesday, I believe, and that too came in under the engineer's estimate. Our contribution to that project remains the same at ninety-five thousand, which that money's already been set aside and budgeted for. So both of those items will be on your agenda next week. That's trying to get that paperwork wrapped up.
David, have you had barricades stolen?
We believe so, yeah. Not, not a ton of them, but there have been some that have been stolen. We've also lost some because of rising floodwaters. We can't, you know, we've got thirty people in the Road and Bridge Department, we don't have all of them working every minute of every day, we can't man every barricade that's out there. We have kids, we assume kids that throw them off the bridges, throw them in the ditches, they wash away. I'm sure some of them will be found in, in a field somewhere along the line whenever farmers start getting back into the fields.
Just piggyback on that, on the way in this morning, I heard the Road and Bridge Superintendent from Anderson County talking on the radio, and he stated that their damage is going to be several hundred thousand, and they're not even sure what it could go to until this all stops and they're able to really get out there. And a couple of days ago, I talked to one of the commissioners from Coffee County, they've got their problems too, so it's, it's not something that Franklin County has done to bring this on, everybody has their, their problems with what's going on right now, so...
Every county I've been in contact with is dealing with similar issues.
Countywide flooding at eleven hundred miles of road, I'm not sure the scale of what you're dealing with is fully appreciated.
Well, it's eleven hundred miles of centerline, which is over two thousand miles of ride away in ditches that are our responsibility.
Okay, takes us to, Mr. Comments important, please. Where do you want to start?
Just know it was a real wet weekend for Memorial Day weekend, and just going to remember the people who made the ultimate sacrifice for our freedoms, and other than that, I haven't been anywhere.
I've not attended any meetings, but I would remind the citizens that there are more departments for the county than just the Road and Bridge, and I wouldn't try to tell David Lee how to run his department, any more than I would tell the Health Department, or the Sheriff, or the Building Maintenance, or Emergency Management, or any of the other departments how to run their departments. We hire competent individuals. I could drive every road in this county, it would take me all week, and then I could go monitor the treasures books, and I could go to the clerk's office and tell her how to run the elections, but you know what, I'm not qualified to do that. And I would remind the people that, you know, the citizens that have legitimate concerns about the roads or anything else, if they contact Derek or David Lee, their concerns are addressed. Not all of them can be taken care of the way they would like them to be taken care of, but they are addressed. If you have concerns and you put them on Facebook, or you contact Gene Hurt, I can't guarantee you that your concerns will be addressed. So, you know, just, this is just, just the, you know, we are here for you, if you have a concern, I would love for you to call me, or email me at the Franklin County email address.
I attended a ransom memorial board, so there are essentially two hospital boards to, as far as, for our purposes, the ransom board would be the one that holds title to the facility, but leases the operations out to Advent. That is, though, the conduit for the tax dollars, the sales tax dollars, and that would be their primary function going forward. And then there's also the Advent Board that deals with operations. I attended the ransom board meeting this month, most of their business centered around changing policies to reflect the new setup. You can expect in the future reporting back from them as far as to where the dollars are going and their uses, so. Aside from that, I appreciate Derek's comments today and stepping in.
Hadn't had a lot of meetings in the last week, but I wouldn't mind commenting how I made my decision on the mower. I went out and met with Public Works mechanic, I went to the guy that run that vehicle for several years, he's retired, I went to his house and talked to him about the equipment and what he thought about it, and he said it was, it was a lot of repairing, and usually he only worked four days a week because the other day it was in the shop. One day, at least one day a week, every week it was in the shop, being repaired or worked on. So that's kind of partially how I made my decision, and like you mentioned, it's all done under government contract, and they got to live by the lowest price with those people. And on that, I appreciate the road people, I know it's been a really pain. I personally, I knew they couldn't hardly get to me where I live, because Rock Creek is out, Potawatomi's out, and North of Rantle is out. So, Road and Bridge had to drive probably forty or fifty miles to get to my house. So, every evening, I did go down to Rantle, I did go to Lane, and I did go there, and I dug the signs out of the ditch a couple of times, and even with it in the middle of the road, there was more people going around it than there was stopping and going So, I appreciate that, and I understand, I went to Miami County and Anderson County cemeteries, and we don't have nothing over them on the way the weather has done to everybody. I mean, you know, I, you know, just something, it'll take a long time, and the thing's like every time you guys get a little bit done, it gets worse. So, that's all I got.
Alan, the public comment, just comment on that right quick. I have driven a lot of the roads in my district to see the damage. I had an individual lose his culvert on his personal driveway, he has to drive through the pasture to get out, he called me about it, I've talked to David about it, to see if it's, if he can purchase a culvert through the county, and so he can get his driveway back so they can get in and out of their house, so, you know, whenever someone calls, do what we can to get them taken care of. Okay, with that said, last Thursday I attended the Prairie Paul's Audit Meeting up at Gardner, a lot of numbers, Melissa's doing a great job, it's amazing, she's crunching numbers, trying to make ends meet, it's an ongoing process, just when they get them where they think they're in pretty good shape, something surprises them and they got to crunch some more numbers, so I don't envy her of that position at all. Then, yesterday I attended Franklin County Tourism Committee, we had some new shares, it's been printed up, there's a map on them and a few things, on the map of different places to eat and things to do, they're up here if anybody wants one of them, help yourself. And we talked about a mission statement, they're wanting to put together a mission statement, and anyway, that discussion, it ended up, normally an hour meeting, we went two hours, a lot of different things was talked about. The sponsorships, they have a list of people that's asked for money for different things, like, like fairs and historical societies and different things like that, and they'll be, that will come, I think, in two weeks in front of us, they've went over that, they've put together a new application form for these people or projects to come in and sign and be approved for contributions to that. And that's all I've attended since the last meeting, is those two things. Did y'all get an email from about the upcoming employee barbecue?
No.
Should have, I need to check your dates and everything, and...
What, what they...
Do we want to do that now?
Yeah, she's trying to put it together to know when it can do it. I'm gone from the seventh of June, and will be back on like the eighteenth or nineteenth, I think we have a meeting nineteenth, I'll be back for that, so that's the only time that I'm gone, the seventh to the nineteenth.
Were you guys having, I've been, you know, last year, where did you hold the, here?
Here, yeah.
Yeah, we hold it in here. So we have some outdoor space where people can sit and then be in here too.
And is it for Archel or the whole county?
Whole county.
Okay, okay.
Basically, what we need to do is find out what dates in June or early July that everybody will be available, so...
On a, what, on a Friday, or what are you thinking?
I don't know that it has to be on a Friday, I think it just needs to be on a date where we can get all of you together. I think one of the things we get the best feedback on is historically the commissioners are there serving the employees and they, talking to the employees, and they really enjoy that, so I think...
What about the last Friday in June?
What's your, what would that be?
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth. It's okay with me.
Final thing, twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight?
Yep.
That worked for you?
I'm okay.
Are you, are you back the Friday before that?
Yeah, I'm back before that.
Or we could do it the twenty-first or the twenty-eighth?
It works, either one of those works for me, so...
Okay.
Tammy, if you want to try the twenty-eighth. Look at those and see if that, that works.
I think it works better being catered versus us cooking.
Yeah, I agree.
We get to talk to people.
I agree. So, catering sounds the best, and around the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
All right, is there anything else on here? Got a commission meeting on June, on June the fifth, and then I, like I said, I'll be gone from the seventh to the nineteenth, but, all right, Health Department meeting after the, after this meeting, so, anybody have anything else? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motions are second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Or adjourn?